Welcome to our work session. Cameras rolling, we're good. Who wants to start out?
I guess that will be me. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, John.
John, can you turn that mic up just a little bit?
Right here, can you hear me better?
I got you.
Okay.
I got you.
Before we get started with the meeting, I want to clarify a few issues which I think I didn't do a great job of in the last meeting. I want everybody to understand that we have two separate items here. One, the last meeting, you were reviewing a comprehensive plan update. Simultaneously going along with that are zoning regulation text amendments. Today's study session or work session is over zoning regulation text amendments. There are roughly nine amendments, two of those had to do with comprehensive plan. The rest of those are just regulatory issues, but we'll go through them. I just wanted to clarify that. That's the reason you have a different presentation than you had last week because last week was over the comprehensive plan. Today is over text amendments. So they're two separate items. I just wanted to be clear before we began. And with that, Amy.
So will we be able to get questions answered on last week's?
We should be able to speak to anything on either one.
Okay.
Okay. So this is just a short presentation over some of the proposals, but if you need to get, want to get into specifics, we also have the red line that we can bring up. So the major changes is creating the tiering system for the special use permits. That does come from the comprehensive plan strategies. The next major change is broadening home occupation license regulations, and then we'll go through the other regulations with you. So the first one is special use permits tier system. Again, this comes from the comprehensive plan. The comp plan identified four subtypes that they recommended we include in our regulations, and those types are before you. Type one is use on large tracts of land that are recreational or public or quasi-public in nature, but can have detrimental impacts to neighboring properties. Type two are uses related to communications or utilities. Type three, uses with unique characteristics and potential to produce nuisance impacts. Type four are uses that are largely industrial operations and frequently cause hazardous or intense nuisances. So again, just, I believe, we spoke about this briefly. The process would be when an applicant comes in and says, hey, I want to do this business on our property, we would go to our table of land uses and see where it fits under our existing table of uses. If that table of uses says in that zoning district it requires a special use permit, we would then come to this tiering system to see where that use would best fall under. And that would determine what we're going to talk about next, which is a recommendation on time limit policies, but it could also determine potential conditions that we would place on that type of use and such. So those are, that's how that tier system would operate. As mentioned, we are also proposing to, not in the regulations, but as a policy, include time limits recommendations based off of the tiering system. So type one would have an indefinite time limit typically because those uses are not going to have as many detrimental impacts to neighboring properties. Type two, we are recommending a 10 to 20-year time limit. And again, these would just be staff's recommendations as we are presenting them to the planning commission and then to the board of county commissioners. You can always change or modify that if you feel that it is warranted for that application. Type three would be a five to 10-year timeframe, and then type four would be one to three.
So on your type two, on communications or utilities, are you talking like a cell tower? Are you talking floor panels? Are you talking water tower?
Potentially. If it's a utility infrastructure that requires a special use permit, and of course that varies based off of what zoning district that they're wanting to build it in, if it requires a special use permit, then yes, it would fall under that type two.
So does a water tower have to have a special use permit?
It would depend on where it's located, but I do believe we recently amended those regulations to allow them in more zoning districts just outright.
So to put this in perspective, could you tell me off the top of your head, you might not be able to, but what would you say most of the S U Ps we already have out there would qualify as type one, two, three, or four?
Most of them, in my experience, would probably fall under the type three.
Three.
But there could be a good number of them that would be type one.
Right. I was thinking three.
Yeah.
I get it now.
Yeah, that makes sense.
One thing to interject, if I could, real quick. With the expansion of the home occupations, you're going to have a vast reduction in the existing elements of S U P. So you're not going to have the numbers that you had before that are going to have to come before you. They'll truly be special uses. That's the intent, to reduce those numbers and expand the home occupation component.
I have a question. The term nuisance is used in two of these different categories. Does the term nuisance convey a legal meaning?
And the definition of nuisance is extremely broad.
So if you're calling it a nuisance impact, definition's extremely broad, but how are we using it here? Are we limiting the definition or are we leaving it as a wide open?
Commissioner, under law, there can be statutory law, which is what we generally operate under, as well as common law, which is old English tradition. Common law definition of nuisance is extremely broad. Some statutes do define what constitutes a public nuisance. Generally, however, the common law definition applies, for example, odors, noise, excessive traffic, basically anything that impedes the enjoyment of the adjoining property owners and the use of their properties can be considered a nuisance.
And are we defining the word nuisance within these regulations or are we using the wide open definition?
Commissioner, being an attorney, I will tell you, the definition of the word nuisance would not fit within the document that we provided this morning.
Unless we limit our interpretation of it.
I would suggest that the definition of nuisance is best left to case law.
Well, but that kind of, that makes it kind of more wide open when you just use a wide open term like that.
Commissioner, the problem with it is, under legal principle, if you specify what constitutes a nuisance, anything that is not specified is not a nuisance.
That's what I was going to say, is if you limit it to black and white, then you're not even going to know something that's presenting.
Maybe if we're trying to plan the use of their land and they have a wide open definition, it makes it more difficult to.
Yeah, but I think you're thinking the opposite way. This is actually covering more.
It opens it up. It's what you want to do, Jeff. Yes.
But keep in mind, this isn't saying they can't do what would create it. It just says that they have to then have an S U P, and then that second tier or the second phase down there would be then that it's limited to a certain amount of time. So it doesn't keep them from having it using it. It just makes it, the S U Ps different.
But we have stuff that's zoned industrial that may require a special use permit and is significant investment, and nobody's going to do that for one to three years.
You have the ability to raise that one to three years to whatever time limit you feel is warranted for that particular application. The one to three years is a staff suggestion based on the intensity of use. So you certainly don't have to comply with the staff suggestion. You can go outside of that. You still have that power.
Aren't we currently, our current rules are indefinite.
Yes, for the ones that are out there. But you have established timelines on others in the past two or three years that I've seen. So again, you have the authority to do that.
I think that we had been moving towards making them more indefinite so they don't have to keep coming back in front of us again and again and again.
There's no problem.
Right. Because if you have them on a time limit, now they're going to have to go through the bureaucratic process every X number of years. And if you're trying to cut out the bureaucratic process, you're trying to reduce the number of entities that have to come back in front of us.
That's why we included the type one, so you still have that tool in front of you as an indefinite S U P.
I think you have a kind of a balancing act here, and that is, a vast majority of the S U Ps that you're discussing that you don't want to have to come back, they're trying to get, fit them in one of these ranges. But you also have some uses that you may not want to have an indefinite, and that would then be a temporary more, not just an S U P, but a temporary S U P. So that's why we have these work sessions, so we can kind of figure out where, what flavor you're looking for is. And we've also, in the last several years, have had a few that you probably would have wanted to have a time limit on them so that you could.
And we have had a couple of them.
And that's what I was just.
That's why this is coming up today. And again, just looking for your feedback, your direction. You have a record, you have some suggestions here, but anything that doesn't fit, if you don't like the one to three years on the type four, you know, let us know. If you want to stay indefinite on all S U Ps, let us know. That's what staff's looking for right now.
So, go ahead, Vicky. I've been talking a long.
No, just, I mean, you know, just as a general rule, looking at like type four, are we better off, because in some areas we already have zoning that, you know, is designated specifically for certain types of use. Maybe it's a change of use, so it has to come back before us in order to, but at what point do we think that potentially instead of having special use permits that we need to move, if we had decided that a business in a type four actually, we'd like to have it, or however you want to put it, should it not be a rezone versus a special use permit? I'm just asking, is that specific category, especially when it's something that, you know, we're saying, because that, we said there could be an investment?
Right.
Or whatever, but that, you know, it has to come back annually, David? I'm just curious.
I'm hopeful this is the last time I'll speak to you this morning, but.
Okay.
There's a difference between, well, zoning confers a right.
Right.
An absolute right. If my property is zoned for residential, I can build a residence upon it. I cannot build an automobile plant upon it.
Right.
A special use permit is designed to allow a use of property without an overall rezoning of that property to confer basically what exists as a permanent right. For example, my property is one, is a house in a subdivision of 200 homes, but I wish to, under current regulation, I want to have a home occupation. I don't, Kansas law would not allow the county to just rezone my specific house to commercial because that's referred to as spot zoning.
Right, I understand.
But there is an avenue that's provided for by law, which is the special use permit, which confers a permit for the use of that property, but not an absolute right.
Right. I was just specifically talking about the use that are largely industrial operations or frequently create hazardous or intense nuisances, that whether or not.
And I might be stepping on what John was getting ready to say here, but just because it's zoned industrial.
Right.
Doesn't mean that everything industrial is allowed car blanche.
Right.
That's the use table.
That's what I said.
So even though we have land that's zoned industrial, it still requires a special use permit because those things are not just granted. So, and I don't know that you want to just say, it's industrial, all holds, no holds bar.
That's what I was asking.
And I think that's what they're, what we're talking about here is that even though it's industrial, you still have to have an S U P for certain uses.
Right. No, I just, I just wanted to get some clarification on, because we have zoning and we have.
And having mentioned S U Ps that would fit in this thing where we said, listen, we're going to give you two years to three years, but we want you to be moved into another area by then.
Right.
So some of these right here would be, would be like the, maybe type four would be, or I think the other one was type three, that would go and say, okay, they have to come back or they have to be moved somewhere else. So you'd want to have some kind of, I wouldn't say grading scale, but that's basically what it, what it is. I don't want to ever hinder anything that makes this county, county grow, but I know there's been some people that I think that we've talked to, where we've told them that they have to come back because it really don't fit in, and if they're growing, they have to come back to us.
I think there's, again, kind of two approaches to that too, and that is, one, everybody gets unlimited S U P unless the board of county commissioners or at some point along the line, planning commission suggests otherwise. Or this approach would be, nobody gets an unlimited S U P unless the board takes action. And that's how we used to do it. Commissioner Smith, I'm sure you remember the S U Ps, when they would come in, there would be five, and often we would grant them 10.
Right.
Because they had a significant investment. So there's, you can do it either way. You could have staff say, okay, well, we're just, we're not going to put limits unless somebody takes action to install a limit. This way is the, we're going to put limits unless somebody takes action to remove the limits.
I personally like the way we're doing it now, because it reduces, reduces the amount of times that people have to come back in.
And they're not worried about making more investments.
Right. And, but if it was a huge enterprise, you would definitely, through the planning commission process, put a requirement on it for review, a certain number of years probably, not three.
So my two cents, I was one of the original ones that wanted to go to the indefinite, you know, even though I was told, well, it's kind of spot zoning, because we didn't like seeing the, 99% of the S U Ps we issue are not a problem.
Right.
And I didn't like requiring them to come back in every couple of years and go through all the process and pay fees over again when there wasn't any issue. And plus the initial investment, if somebody's going to put a couple million dollars into a business and operate on an S U P, that's asking for trouble. So I, I was all for the indefinite in the beginning, but I think I've seen some problems with that in this last four or five years where it's a lot easier to just not renew somebody's S U P than to try to pull one.
I agree.
And so I think this is a better fit because now I'm not of the opinion that we should make them all indefinite like we are right now because of the few, very few, that we're having problems with, and it's almost impossible to pull.
The few you're talking about.
We're not going to discuss the few that we're talking about.
No, no, we're not, I'm not naming the people. I'm just saying, are they the more intensive use ones?
Yeah, I mean.
But not necessarily.
I guess you would say that, but my point is it's easier.
So it's type four.
But not, that's not necessarily, because we could have, you know, the type one that come to find out this just wasn't the greatest thing in the world that we ever decided to do. And I think that one of the things that we need to remember or keep in mind is that with all of these, that they're subject to change if there's intense complaints from surrounding neighbors or law enforcement or whatever, that something is going on within this, that we can bring it back in.
And we thought that's how it would work with the way we're doing it.
And that's why the tiers, you know, I don't have huge concern with having tiers. I just have concerns with whether or not, especially on the type fours, what I'm, I mean, and it is, that mostly with type four, there's probably a huge investment that's been, that there's been, you know, so that we kind of need to look at those on a case by case basis as to whether or not they can be done in a larger amount in time because we have that fallback that says we can, but then you get, then we can.
And the type fours would be ones that are probably going to outgrow their spot.
Right.
And so we know and they agree that they're eventually going to move to a bigger spot.
They're not going to grow in a year.
Three.
Just, I've just, it's just kind of to me, I scratch my head on the type, because type four usually means that this, this operation has an investment. I mean, they have skin in the game that's pretty significant versus a type one that has, you know, minimal.
They're living there at their house anyways.
Right.
We used to have all these cabinet makers coming up here, and we had people that did engine repair coming up here, and, oh, thank you, thank you for letting us keep operating. And they've been operating with no complaints for all this time. I, I just, I don't mind these categories, but I just hope that we can figure out a way that limit the ones that still have to come in.
I think from their, from their definition, the way they'll do it when they bring it for us will do that. I like the tiers because I think being wide open has caused more problems, especially with the chairperson was saying, that I did not realize until we got down the line. But looking at the type they bring in and letting the staff do the recommendation or do what, whatever they need to do, it's open. I mean, you've got one through four sitting there in front of you. So it really gives you an opportunity to do, whether it be type one or it be type three, which I think you probably see type three more than anything. I'm fine with this, with the system. My two cents.
Can we make a, like a caveat or an asterisk after the type one, two, three, four years that, subject to discretion of the planning commission and the board of county commissioners? Is it subject to discretion?
We've actually included that in the language in the final sentence. It's, let's see, as well as term of the permit unless otherwise directed by the board of county commissioners.
Okay. And I think the planning commission also, because they're working directly with the.
Yeah, but I think the board of county commissioners are the official.
By on the society.
They're the ones that really makes the decision on it. They're an advisory board of planning commission.
And just to also say, the time limits will not be physically in the zoning regulations. That is a department policy that will be separate. So it's not going to say in the zoning regulations, type one is an indefinite, indefinite recommendation or anything like that. So if that helps.
Clear as mud. Moving on.
I just really want to make sure that we understand that.
I agree.
That we can.
What we're doing.
Right, that we can look at and make decisions that are based on knowing that, you know, somebody has put a significant investment into something that we not impair, you know, hamper them with.
And we have only presented one.
Right. And I understand that.
Message you asked.
Yeah, I would, thank you, Commissioners. I would just like to interject that you, as the board of county commissioners, always have discretion to make changes when these applications for S U P come before you. And this policy is a reflection of how much oversight this commission would like on the ranges of the S U Ps. So if there's concern for the one to three years based on the industrial ones, staff is open and willing to hear how often, what you think that timeframe should be. But ultimately, even if staff made a recommendation and you have other information, you can certainly change that to fit the policy decision of this commission.
I just want to make sure that we have an off switch on the indefinite ones. I don't, I want to make sure we don't tie our hands to where it makes it more difficult to turn one off.
Yeah, offset of what we're trying to do.
Commissioners, again, as opposed to rezoning, when you issue a special use permit, you're allowed to put conditions on the granting of that permit. And unless it has changed, and I don't believe it has, some of the stock conditions that are put in there are compliance with all state, federal, and local regulations, not creating a public nuisance. And those two are your safeguards as far as, you grant me a special use permit for a home barber shop, and I change it to a home crematorium, and I'm creating a public nuisance at that point. You can revoke that special use permit, my property goes back to residential, which is what it's zoned at. So I think Misty's words to you are, if you follow this, it's really guidance for your staff as to how they process requests by property owners in the county to, on using their property other than that from which it is zoned, and how to bring it to you for your final decision.
Can I ask you a question about rescinding a special use permit? When, when a special use permit goes inactive for a significant amount of time, is there a certain amount of time that triggers the timeframe in which we would be then invalidated or invalidates itself? 12 months?
There is a clause that provides that if the use is abandoned for 12 months, then it then becomes a void, a special use permit. The issue would become what constitutes abandonment. Cessation of operations is not necessarily, under law, abandonment.
Okay, so a little bit deeper than that. So what would be the, what would be abandonment?
Sell my house and leave.
Okay, so if I have a special use permit and I'm supposed to be building, making widgets, and I don't make widgets for 12 months, I'm, I still have that special use permit in it, I can still start up my widget factory.
And you do not intend to abandon the use, yes.
So that seems like that should be maybe a little more defined in our special use permits, what we, when we consider it to be terminated.
And again, Commissioners, that's the quandary that's faced by all legislators, and you're the local legislature of Lakewood County, is how specifically do you define certain things? Because if you specifically define something, everything outside of it doesn't fall within it. Abandonment really can, there's also a hell of an intent that goes into that. For example, if I misplaced an item, I didn't abandon the item, I just lost it. Abandonment means I no longer wish to claim ownership to it.
Because somebody could have an illness. I'm just saying, and they have not abandoned their business, they just were not able to operate that business for a period of time because they had a very solid reason, and then once they're well again, they can go back and to write what they were doing, so.
Commissioner, I fully understand your concern, and there are other areas of safeguards that can be built into the process of issuing a special use permit, and I think they largely already exist and/or are being fine tuned by Amy and John.
And I think that's what those tiers are, in how many, how many, how much time falls between reissuing.
And you can't make, you can't make a code or an ordinance or anything for every issue that we can think of. They have to be able to have some flexibility in that, and I think that's what this gives us, I think that's what you're saying too, Vicky.
So when we convey property, we allow currently that your S U P goes from one owner and you convey the property to the next owner.
You have 60 days to do so, yes.
All right. Does that trigger an automatic review of that S U P, or it just automatically conveys there's no review?
No. According to the regulations, there is no review. Those rights transfer to the new property owner if we're not a five to 60 days.
With no review of the current S U P.
Right.
So that might be my, just my two cents, I think if property conveys and it's in category four, I think it should be something that should automatically come for a review.
What about any?
Just category four.
Heavy intensive, you know.
Right, but.
Why not make all of them?
Why not make all of them?
You know, I might have a grinning business that turns into a.
So the new owner understands the rules of the process.
Dogfighting operation, I'm just, for example.
Yeah, just expand that.
Well, I guess that makes sense because if you convey, now at least you have to go through the process and you understand the rules.
Right.
Yeah.
I agree.
I'm okay with that.
I'm good with that one.
I'm assuming the review would be.
So all four of them or just?
A full application, full process.
I mean.
I'm saying all of them, because you don't, I mean, you don't know what somebody may, what you thought that that person would be doing.
I was thinking of the heavy intensive, but that makes sense.
You might as well put them.
So just for clarification, then anytime property conveys, if there's an S U P that they want to continue, they need to fill out a new application and go through the process?
I agree with that. On all four tiers?
All four tiers.
All four, yeah.
All right.
So in essence, the S U P terminates on land sale, and that if you want a new S U P, then you have to apply for said S U P. So no S U P rights would be transferred with the property. That's the intent?
That's my opinion.
That's what, what we're saying.
Is there a way to keep, I mean, we're adding all four categories, so we're talking about more, is there a way to make some of it administratively?
To allow, allow to operate.
Well, allow.
Allow to continue to operate till they've been through the process.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it just makes sense if you convey the property that it should be reviewed, I think.
Okay, again, just points of clarification, just to make sure that I'm understanding it correctly. So at the time the property sells, it conveys title, you want that S U P to be null and void, the new owner starts again, because that's essentially what we're talking about, they fill out an application and go through the process.
Well, how about it triggers a review? It doesn't go null and void.
Okay, so the review would entail?
But that person has to, I would say that they have to acknowledge that they understand all of the conditions, that they agree to comply with all of the conditions, rather than having somebody have to go through the entire process again, that there be a mechanism in place that if it goes through another owner or whatever, that they actually acknowledge, give an acknowledgement that they understand that these are the terms under which this is, is happening versus somebody saying, oh, you know, I have an existing business and you can take it over, and it's, you know, and the special use permit's already in place, that that's not necessarily true, that that, that individual has to, in order to be able to continue to operate, they have to.
Agree to the conditions.
Agree to the conditions already there and.
And not reapply?
Right.
And maybe you could come with an abbreviated process for handling that.
Well, because after some point, they're going to, oh, because, because on the home, you know, the home occupation is indefinite, that if they have not or do not, or if there are issues, then it triggers a reapplication.
Home occupation is not one that's probably concerning because when the person leaves, they're no longer occupying the home and doing the business, so that would be different. But the three and four. But the three and four are the ones that really you're talking about.
Right, but a repair shop is what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah, the threes and fours, I think, are where.
Right.
So if we, if we trigger review, and David, this would be, or Misty, it'd be a question for you, would an affidavit of understanding suffice so that the new owner understands with all the conditions?
And that's all they gotta do, is that what you're saying, Vicki? They don't need to go through the application process over again?
They don't have to redo the whole thing.
Well, why wouldn't they? I mean, they're new, they're new people.
I think it's to start over from scratch.
They're, they're coming, new people are coming on, doing this, why wouldn't you want to start that?
You're creating a big bureaucracy of having to redo them all.
It looks like it could be a bigger headache down the line, Mike, if these folks don't understand and we're not doing it, following it. You're triggering a review, I think, just as, you need a new person in front.
You don't know what to really pull.
Could we establish a review and an abbreviated process so that it's more expedited than the current process to go through the whole?
I don't know how we can change an issue without the public hearing and the notification components of that. I, I think statute requires that we, that we do that. So in essence, it would be the entire process. I don't know a way to abbreviate that.
I mean, it still makes sense.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to make it so it's clean. And I think that's the best way to do it for everybody, especially the people that are taking over the property.
Well, and I'm looking at it as another safety valve.
Me too.
You know, process.
That's what I'm looking at.
It's easier to not issue one than to try to revoke one.
And end up, and end up in court.
This is gonna create more, more work for the Planning Commission.
It'll be okay, they'll, they'll be able to handle that, I'm sure. So as, as long as I understand...
And that's the problem right there, is it's hard to pass legislation when 99% of them aren't a problem. So we thought we were doing that with the indefinite ones, but then the 1% are a big problem, so.
Jeff, would you cut Mike's mic off?
You got two more questions, Mike.
Just for, or give him two more questions, that's it.
No, I mean, I think we're clear as mud now, aren't we?
Yeah, I thought I said that, Mike.
Yeah, just so I'm getting the guidance that I need. So the SUP, from what I'm hearing, the SUP, it does not convey. It terminates at the transfer of title.
That's my opinion.
In my assessment of that.
Start from scratch, keep it clean.
Now, now, do we need to put in there that they can continue to operate if they sign, like Vicki was talking about, an affidavit of understanding or something?
I wouldn't go down that route.
They've got to get their SUP approved before they convey that property, because why would you buy it and then find out later you can't?
Right.
That's why I was going with that.
Most development does that anyway. There's a caveat in the, in the process that they will not purchase unless the development conditions are met.
You know, one of the reasons I'm saying is...
If that is in place or an SUP or whatever it happens to be.
I think it protects the person that's buying the property. When you start conveying or doing stuff like that, something's gonna get mixed, missed, and then we're gonna be sitting right back there saying, start it from scratch.
Yeah. I, I think I understand, so SUP rights, they...
Doesn't transfer automatically with the property.
They do not transfer, they terminate. You have, I'm assuming, a 60-day window in which those rights terminate? It sounds like that's what you want to give them as a pillow, to either apply.
You're borrowing us the policy written, how you propose it.
Once they have, so do they have to stop operating in the ensuing amount of time, is what I'm saying?
Well, I think Mark made a valid point, that whoever that new property owner is, they can't, they shouldn't probably operate a, a use that's designated as a special use until they go through the process, so.
Right.
Yeah, I agree.
Again, I'm, I'm just trying to get direction from the staff level.
Do you get your SUP approved before you convey the property? That's what most businesses would do anyway.
Yes, so the continuum of operation wouldn't really matter, because they're gonna get the SU, the new SUP approved before they buy it.
Right, so the transfer title typically won't happen until they go through that entire process. Even though they may be a contractual owner, that's typically how it's done. They may apply it, or act as...
That's all I was trying to make sure, that there was something in place.
Yeah, they act as agent typically for the owner.
And do you need to change any verbiage on who can apply for the SUP? Because it won't be the property owner, probably.
No, they won't, if they fill out, again, an affidavit of, an agent, an owner's authorization, in other words, acting as agent for the owner, they're well within their rights to do that.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have direction on that. Moving on to home occupations.
All right, so the home occupations licenses are currently located in our definition section. I prefer not to have regulations and definitions, so we're going to move it into the special use and temporary special use article. In addition to that, we're also going to make a few changes, or we're proposing to make a few changes, I'm sorry. In that, home occupation shall take place inside of a structure, but not to exceed more than 25% of the main floor or 50% of a secondary floor. So think of like a childcare facility that's operating in a basement with a walkout. If, since that is a secondary floor, 50% of that floor area can be used for that business. If the home occupation is located in an accessory structure, that business shall not exceed more than 75% of the floor area.
Hold it here, and again...
How are we gonna regulate that?
Well, it, it, there's gonna be a certain degree of assumption that's gonna go along with that, if...
So should you really even put that, if, if we can't regulate that, why, why?
Because we have to fall back to it, it's available to us. Or we can hire security.
Because we're trying to, we're trying to open up the definition of home occupation to limit the amount of SUP requirements throughout the county so that you guys don't have as many indefinitely. And there are a lot of SUPs that really would fall under, logically fall under a home occupation. And if it's inside the walls, obviously, we're not going to be doing interior inspections. However, again, if the use requires an SUP, we want to be able to pursue that as well. But we want to get, we want to get rid of those tier twos and, you know, potentially some tier threes that don't necessarily need to be in the SUP process.
Commissioner, like most things, complaint driven.
So you mentioned licensed daycare, aren't they licensed by another agency besides the county?
Yeah.
So what, does that fall into what they have?
Does it comply with what the state requires?
The state requires.
Potentially could, I mean, the state is looking at different aspects of that business than what zoning typically looks at.
It will look at building code elements too, depending on the number of kids or the number of adults that are in, as part of that, that, that care facility. And yes, it is regulated by KDHE to some degree.
We're not crossing over though. Our zoning regulations do not cross over into the KDHE.
No.
So it's, you get a, you get a, let's say you go to KDHE and you get your daycare license. Well, you still have to follow our rules from a zoning standpoint, and that, that's true of a lot of others.
But do they have rules similar to this, that 30% of the houses like this?
Typically, those are centered, go ahead.
I don't know.
They just, they have the number of, like, if it's a daycare, they have, you'd have to have a number, a certain number of places for a child to sleep, let's just say. So that there is, you know, an area that is designated and that there is a space for each child to do that. You can't operate without, you know, on a, without an exit that's ground level. You, you know, so you can't, you can't say, well, it's in my basement. I'm just saying, for example, it's in my basement and there's a set of stairs that, that exits out. You technically cannot do that because, based on age. If you're taking kids that are under a specific age.
They do an inspection.
And then they do an inspection, they inspection, but the council department goes in and does part of those inspections as well, so it's...
We can't be less restrictive than KDHE.
Right, we can be more restrictive.
So if for some reason the KDHE said, you have, you can only have 40% of a secondary floor, that rule applies to their license.
Right.
Not to our SUP or in a home occupation, they wouldn't even have it necessarily.
Where did we get the numbers, though? Did this come from a model piece of, like, model legislation or model home occupation rules?
Well, there, it's a, it's a combination of that, yeah. There's, the 25% is a typical number for a main floor, that's, that's generally how it's applied. The 75% for an accessory structure is to avoid a complete commercial use in a residential area. Say that you build the, build a accessory building and decide to turn it into a restaurant in the middle of the neighborhood, we want to be able to avoid that under a home occupation. So 75% would cover almost every potential home occupation out there that we're trying to address in a accessory area.
So what if you had a, a accessory dwelling and you were wanting to do your daycare in there?
Well, again, the daycare requirements would refer to KDHE first. You would have to comply with the state's requirements.
Regulation?
Seventy-five percent.
Yeah, 75% for...
In the new, even though it's not part of your actual dwelling, you'd still have these limits?
You wouldn't be able to use 100% of that dwelling to, for the purpose of your daycare center. You'd only be able to use 75% of it. So there'd have to be a way of separating out and demonstrating that 25% is...
If you do, then it's like you said, it's a commercial building.
Right.
It's no longer an accessory unit or accessory building.
Right, and again, the, the idea is to, to do away with some of these lower tier SUPs that you guys deal with on a regular basis that really should be home occupation.
Yeah, I think 75% is...
And when we're talking about specific daycares, again, as Mark said, you have to comply with state laws first.
Probably.
I just like to keep it to private decision making as much as possible.
I've never seen it that high before.
That's pretty high.
I've never seen it that high before.
I just think that 75% is high on the, the floor area, when it's, when it's supposed to be...
So there's a difference here, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear. There is a difference of opinion on whether we should have a limit or not. Before we move forward, I'd like for the commission to decide where we're at with this, because do we have a limitation on the foot, the area, the main floor area, secondary floor, or do we just leave that open? So that, I want to make sure that the commission is on the same page, because it sounds like there's a difference of opinion here.
I'm for leaving it open, letting people decide.
Well, this KDHE's gotta be the one.
They've got their regulations.
As long as they're complying with KDHE.
Well, but we're not talking about just daycare.
The daycare, you're talking about...
And this becomes, it becomes a commercial business that's in there, but versus, I mean, like, I mean, a true, like, to me, but I guess we're gonna address those with how much, I don't know, I just...
I don't know, we're not gonna have the capability of enforcing it in reality, why, why we even write a regulation?
I just thought this was supposed to be the mom and pop shop type thing.
We could enforce it on a complaint basis, which is what we've done with our other code enforcement.
I like leaving it to private decision making as much as possible.
I agree.
Well, I just think that, that when we're talking, I look at the home occupation licenses being more the mom and pop thing, and that's level, that's tier one, which I think once you hit a certain threshold, you should move into tier two when there is a limit. And it isn't unlimited, that it, it should, there should be more...
At what point is it no longer a home?
Right.
And it's now a commercial structure?
That's what my concern is.
Are you actually even living there, or are you just running a business?
Right, see, so I don't care that, you know, to me, it's not a problem, that's their property. But where does it fall under the special use? And I think that, that I look at the num, the one literally being the mom and pop type thing, where I'm doing my, I'm, I'm accepting tax returns, let's just say, that people can bring their tax returns to me and, and, you know, and I'm operating my business out of there, or...
Kind of repair shop.
A, a, you know, a small repair shop, small engine repair, whatever, that it has not grown. But when it grows to a certain point, I think that, that then it's no longer the mom and pop thing, it becomes a commercial business. And then, we're not saying you can't have a commercial business, we're saying, with the special use permit, we're saying it falls under two, not one.
Yeah, it doesn't fall underneath that.
And with the home occupation license, what we've done, if you read the rest of these, what we've tried to do is increase the allowable elements here, specifically like removing the limitation on number of employees. Employees will be counted on daily trip vehicular counts, increase maximum trips from 12 to 20, you know? So again, trying to expand those requirements so that people that were coming with an SUP can actually do it under a home occupation. Prohibition of sales of tangible goods, only be limited to properties less than two and a half acres, specifically subdivisions, you know, where you, you have that, you have that prohibition of sales on everything currently.
John, on your, John, on your experience in the past, I'm trying to think back, is that, shall not exceed more than 75% of the floor area, is that a common practice with other places? Or is that, is that just...
No, what we tried to do there is take into account the existing businesses that are out in the county and tried to, the ones we know of, and tried to apply that 75% rule. And, you know, accommodate everybody that's out there that we can underneath a home occupation business, unless it's an intensive use, like an automotive repair facility, et cetera, et cetera, then that would be SUP. But again, something that, say, somebody is warehousing, I don't know, dolls in their, in their accessory structure, well, that's gonna be under this, if it doesn't go past 75%, it's, it's gonna be home occupation.
Well, I just think that, you know, that are, I mean, are you saying because we've already issued them their special use permits? Or because we've identified people that have businesses that are not operating under special use permits?
No, it's, it's people that you have issued SUPs. We, we looked at the total number of SUPs and ones that likely could be pulled under this home occupation license and shouldn't go through the SUP process. And the SUP processes tend to be for far more intensive uses. It looks to me, and again, just judging from the outside in, that anybody that's out of business and, and the county typically comes in and gets an SUP.
But the, you know, the, an accessory structure crosses, to me, the threshold of being a home occupation.
Right, then it moves to, like you said, tier two or tier three?
Right, but it says right here, it says, if the home occupation is located in an accessory structure, shall not exceed more than 75% of the floor area. Are we talking about maybe a, a place where you're living in that structure? And that it's more of an accessory, so I'm not, I'm saying, I'm not understanding where we're going when we're saying that 75% of the floor area, to me, becomes more of a commercial period operation. It has nothing, home occupation, to me, is where you have a business in your home, not, you know, that's, that's within the confines of where you live, not the barn in the backyard.
Repair diesel engine.
Then that goes to number two, then it's number two. I mean, that becomes more of a...
Is that what you were envisioning, or what?
Well, again, my, the end goal here was to reduce the number of SUPs that were less intensive. And in a rural setting, you're gonna have accessory uses, that, that's typically why we're addressing the 2.5 and less. You'll see a lot of these with that 2.5 or less. When you have a large acre tract, let's say you own a, I don't know, a, a company that has five salesmen and you are storing your materials in your garage and your salesman come in and park, that happens a lot throughout a rural, a rural county. And I don't want to make those particular people go through the SUP process, because that is not an intensive use.
I'm understanding that, I can understand that, but I just...
So, but when you're in a subdivision, let's say you're in a one-acre lot subdivision, you put up, you put up an accessory structure and you're, I don't know, running a paint shop out of your garage in the back, well, that's a completely different animal. You've got cars stored up outside, ready to be painted, well, that's, that's, that's a different thing. So that, we tried to, we've tried to figure that in, in these, in these text amendments.
Okay, I got it, I got it, and I just, that just kind of blew my mind with that 75% of the floor area being a home occupation.
The ability to, of people out there to use their property without impacting the adjoining neighborhood.
So what if we just took out the part about the 25% of the main floor and the 50% of the secondary floor? We just said, the home occupation shall take place inside a structure, but not to exceed 75% of the floor area? Or the total area again? I, I guess it just looks like it's over-regulating when you're trying to tell people it's gotta be this much on this floor and this much on this floor, but if we're just limited to 75% period and leave it there?
I, I think 75% gets to be more than the...
You gotta remember too, though, this, this is played in a business somewhere, it's in, it's gonna have other folks around it, care how far apart they are. And if you're gonna, if you're gonna open up a business, then find yourself a spot and open up a business, if you're, if you're using that much. I think this gives the people like the mom and pop, so like, the opportunity to have something they can do without going and having to find a place to open a business up. There's all kinds of thoughts on this, folks.
But when you're not limiting the number of employ, I'm just saying, but when you stop limiting the number of, just, kind of like, to me, it's like you stop eliminating the number of employees, or you stop, you start doing those things, that you're opening up, and, and then you're also making it to where city businesses are not having to, you know, the people that are, are following specific rules, you're, you're, it just doesn't feel right to me to give too much latitude to people who are doing both, living in their home and, or, or have an accessory building, and they're not having to invest and say, we have, we're, we're asking people to do business parks and, or cities and stuff, or to do these things, and that we're not, we're giving unfair advantages to other businesses by, and, and I'm just on the home occupation license, because of the, the amount of what we're allowing for is pretty significant, in my opinion.
What's our employee limit now? We don't have a, what's our current law?
Currently, it's two non-resident employees.
Two non-resident?
Right.
And we're taking that all the way, so technically you could have...
Fifty.
Well, we're, we're living...
As long as they carpool.
Yeah, but what if they, well, but what if they did? I mean, what if you said, now you can't, you know, you guys need to ride together to get here, to get all your stuff, to get your supplies, to get your materials, blah, blah, blah. If, if you, ostensibly, that could happen.
But if you had employees that were just, like, not all there, they're just coming and going, you know, it's... and going, you know, it's, I don't know, you got to kind of leave it wide open a little bit.
Well, you can say on the premise, but the thing about it is too, if I was looking at this and I would say, hmm, why should I want to move into the city?
Right.
If I can go down the sides and put all this stuff up and avoid a lot of the other stuff that cities make me do, county could benefit.
Well, the other county can benefit, but, but.
But why would, that's not our plan. Our plan is to get them services hooked up to within infrastructure and.
Right, that's my point.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I'm, I'm, I understand what you're saying, can we cause a seventy-five percent? This can be rewritten a hundred times, but honestly, it's a working document that I think it's, it's getting us to where I thought we wanted to be. Off the soapbox.
Should we have a, I mean, one thing about what you were talking about, should there be a fee attached to a home occupation license?
Yes.
Because you're impacting, I mean, there's a certain amount of impact and it costs when we do the.
We currently have a fee for home occupations.
And what would that be?
I think it's negligible, it's like twenty-five dollars.
It's not that much, no. Since we don't require a public hearing or anything like that, it's a pretty.
It's a minimal fee.
Well, seems like you should consider adjusting that.
We can certainly do that if that's our direction.
Go take a look at it, yeah.
Well, I mean, twenty-five dollars used to be able to buy a heck of a lot, but now, now it doesn't buy much, it doesn't buy much staff time.
Can't even go through the McDonald's drive-through.
No.
You have three rocks and half a stop sign.
And I know.
Two sodas.
And I know.
So just again, so, so staff is clear, are, the commission is okay with this?
I'm fine with this the way it is right now, we can always adjust.
Okay.
I don't like it.
I know you don't, Vicki.
Do you want to put a limit on the number of employees?
It's two now.
I don't know.
The reason, the reason we deferred to trips was the impact to adjoining properties, not necessarily how many employees you have, it's the amount of traffic you create by the vehicles moving in and out of the business.
You have to pick them up all the time.
That was our logic behind the.
But I can take my, I can take a big, huge cargo van or whatever you want to call it and load it up from my place and go to someplace else where there's other, where there's employees that they have and there's, and I can operate my business out of someplace and not have to have a business license or what, I mean, you know, not have to comply with, with a lot of the stuff that you have to comply with. I just think that it's just, it just bothers, that just, I think that I'm kind of disturbed by not having the number of employees and I'm, that seventy-five percent, I'd be more happy with fifty, like fifty percent of the floor area on the accessory structure so that it is not a business, it is a home occupation.
I don't have a problem.
Versus moving from, and then when you pass that threshold of fifty percent, you go into the category of number two.
I don't have a problem with seventy-five percent, I do, I do suggest that the commission look at a number of employees, I think from going from.
On the premise?
Yeah, I think from just opening it wide up. Would there be a recommendation from staff?
I don't think two is probably appropriate, I think, you know, six would be a decent number for a small business.
I could live with that.
That would be two, that'd be your twelve trips right there, so.
Yep, I could live with that.
I, I think that keeps it as a small business. And it doesn't, it says, if it says on premises, it, it doesn't take into account where people are picking up supplies or something.
If there's different routes, just whoever is at that particular structure at the time, so we, we can certainly adjust that.
We'd go to six, Jim.
I would agree with that.
So we change that to six. Are we okay with moving forward on the first bullet point as written?
Twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five?
I am. I know Vicki's not, but I am.
Consensus, I can go with a consensus, I just don't like.
I know, Vicki.
Fine with me.
Well, my preference is to not have any kind of written down rules, let, let the people decide. But whatever you guys.
I'm okay with it, Doug?
I'd agree with Mike. We're saying it's wise.
Pull out the twenty-five and fifty but leave the seventy-five. Pull out the twenty-five and fifty but leave the seventy-five.
That would, that's.
It makes it simpler, I agree with that.
Is that closer?
I don't, but whatever the board wants to do. I think it's, I think the way it sets it up gives more, gives it more, I think you have to keep some things on there.
And how, how are we going to enforce?
I told you about security, I think the twenty-five, fifty, and seventy-five is, is fine. What do y'all want to do?
That's fine.
You want the twenty-five, fifteen?
It's fine.
So seventy-five percent of any structure, not just accessory structures, seventy-five percent of a house, anything.
So these two are saying, leave the twenty-five, fifty, us three are saying?
It doesn't matter to me.
Seventy-five.
Move on, you've got three or two, move on.
Whichever is fine.
Seventy-five, it'll be seventy-five percent of floor space, total.
And no inspection.
Well, we don't have an inspection. Again, all complaint.
I don't like writing regulations with those notes.
It's all complaint trip.
From two to six employees, you know, puts it more of a cap on it.
Commissioner Stevens will do it.
Okay, excellent.
Next.
We're going, oops.
Well, that's the best one, yeah.
Or that, that's even better.
That was the best one.
All right, so some of the other changes, we are codifying the accessory dwelling unit regulations, currently it's in a policy, we would like to put them in the regulations, so we will be creating Article thirty-three to houses' regulations and we are not proposing to change any of the wording in that, just moving it into the zoning regulations. The second one, amend preliminary.
A question on the accessory dwelling. We talked several years ago about different standards on the double wides and the single trailers on the tornado issue of the tie-down. What's our current regulations on that?
I believe we still have the regulations about requiring tie-downs, but the, if I remember correctly, that was for those in those specific parks, not as accessory dwellings as.
So if they were using a double wide or a trailer home or a mobile home, would they fall under those regulations as far as requirements for tornado safety?
You would fall under the code requirements, but again, it's voluntary compliance.
I think what you're referring to is when we had the tornado and people were living in it, not, not mobile homes, but in campers or RVs.
Well, yeah.
Temporarily, well, on their side, they might bring something in. RV parks have different regulations.
There's no physical way to tie a RV down and make it, make it compliant with, with tornado loads, they don't have the structure.
Are our regulations the most current as far as the best safety recommendations for double wides and trailers?
Again, you, I think you have that in place in your code right now, but to reiterate, it is a voluntary compliance, but yes, those regulations.
I mean, yeah, it's voluntary compliance.
Those regulations.
But you're going to be subject to being sued if you don't follow it.
Currently, they're in the oh-six, but we are, we are adopting the two thousand and twelve, that should be completed by July, that's our timeframe, we've made it through the review of the IRC and moving on to the IBC right now.
So just to clarify that, when we say voluntary, just for people that are listening, if, if you didn't do it and somebody died and there was a lawsuit, it would be an issue in the lawsuit, the fact that you didn't comply with the regulations.
Mr. I think that's a reasonable opinion, Mr..
Well, it is, sorry, I should ask you.
Well. Could you be brave for a question?
It's just the fact that it is, it is possible that if there was a lawsuit and there was regulations in effect in the county, like the twenty-twelve code that required tie-downs or whatever the current, most current regulations are on trailers and double wides and you did not comply with it and somebody was injured or hurt, it is possible in a lawsuit that that could be a legal issue in defining what liability would be.
Commissioner, I cannot say that it's impossible.
Wow.
Anybody sue anybody for anything. There's a lot of variables there. A mobile home could have been placed before codes.
You know? Commissioner, in that case, I think the liability to the county would be very limited if, if existent at all.
But I wasn't getting at our county liability, I was just getting at the fact that if you're a owner and you didn't comply, then you're going to be in trouble in that case, possibly.
Unless it was placed before codes.
Yeah, bingo. Next.
All right, amend the preliminary drainage and road plan requirements for preliminary plots, what we are proposing to do is require those plans to be submitted with a final plot submission when applicable. This is pretty standard for other jurisdictions, preliminary plans can be included into the preliminary plat process, but to have your final plans done by that time can create some issues. So we are recommending requiring it with the final plat instead of the preliminary plat.
And this is at the suggestion of engineering and public works as well, so we both agree on this.
This is interior roads?
Yes.
Just interior roads and something, okay.
Yes, yeah, this speeds up the development process and doesn't require them to have a full set of road plans before they've ever platted the property. Any questions on that one?
Don't ask that question.
Okay.
All right, next one, create a requirement for the inclusion of agricultural conservation easements, which really is any section of land that is in the floodplain or has been deemed valuable agricultural land per the comprehensive plan, and that would just be a recommending, a recommendation from the comprehensive plan when that, that land is being platted. So really, it's floodplain that would be protected through an easement that would limit the uses in that area to agricultural uses.
Meaning you could have ag buildings, hay barns, septic fields, all of those things would be acceptable in those particular areas. The only thing that wouldn't be acceptable would be single-family houses and obviously it's in the floodplain, really.
But what creates the necessity for something?
I don't like this.
That particular requirement is actually a comp plan driven and it's not uncommon it's to protect, protect viable farmland throughout a county, it's typically a rural consideration in the comp plan process. You want to make sure you don't develop across all of your substantial farmland.
But we're not going to develop on the floodland because it's.
That's a little government overreach, but conservation easements, could use the definition of a conservation easement.
The definition of this particular easement is an easement that protects floodplain and is identified in the, in the comprehensive plan by limiting development, that is how it's defined in this.
Is that already protected by the Corps of Engineers?
Is that a public easement?
It's an encumbrance on the property, it's not a public easement, I'm sorry.
That's redundant and unnecessary and I think it's someplace that we need to get completely remove that from the comprehensive plan because that is already handled.
By FEMA?
By FEMA and.
And I, and I think that's how this kind of originated was, we were looking for ways to help the people that were looking for ag preserve.
The people that don't own the ground that want to tell everybody what to do with the ground.
Yeah, and so we thought, well, the floodplain already has FEMA regulations.
Has FEMA, this is, you can't build a subdivision in it or build a house in it.
That's already done, I mean, and I don't want to be in conflict with FEMA and I don't want to, and, and I don't want to be in conflict with.
Yeah, I think at this point.
People who have agricultural land that they're already farming and that, I mean, that's their.
Yeah, we took a shot at.
You're saying cut it out, just take this one out?
I think at this point, yeah.
We just use, we, we, all FEMA.
Yeah, we took, we took a shot at trying to create ag preserve, but I don't think this.
FEMA's good, I mean, that takes care of all of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think going back to when we actually did the comp plan, if you remember, I think there's like a chapter and a half.
That we cut out.
Soil conservation and these types of things that we removed because at the time we didn't agree with maybe the, I'll use overreach, I guess, so this, this is just still in comp plan, so that might be something that the next time we amend the comp plan, that we look at making sure that any reference to this type of stuff is also removed.
Well, but last week it was a high priority and going to be proposed in twenty-twenty-four.
Actually, this is it being proposed and we're taking it back.
That's what I'm saying.
I'm just saying, I don't think it should be a priority, I just don't.
You shouldn't tell somebody they can't sell their property. Farm is a business, the land is an asset.
And that's what they're asking.
And that's why I'm thinking that we need to make sure that we clean the entire comp plan to these references, so they're not there anymore.
So let's remove them this year.
Yeah, we'll leave the agricultural conservation easement to the FEMA regulations already existing.
Right, FEMA regulations, and, and that should, should take care of that.
Scratch it. And don't worry about the productive farmland because the whole County Road One corridor is productive farmland. We not going to develop it someday?
Good point.
I don't know, but.
We spent a lot of money doing a study on that corridor.
Yeah, and we don't want to limit industrial and commercial, so.
I just don't want to tell a business, farming's a business, that, hey, you can't get the maximum benefit out of your assets if you're going to sell it, if you need to sell five acres.
So we're just going to scratch that completely out.
I think so.
Yeah.
Okay, we can do that.
Can I tell John?
The next one we have is amend the cross-access easement regulations to limit C A Es to eight lots or less, which is the limit for a minor plat versus a major plat within the existing regulations, and then also to require a sixty-foot wide easement for the private drive and create standards for cul-de-sac design to account for emergency vehicles that may use the private drive. The standards would just be to require the bulb of the cul-de-sac to be a certain width, it would not impact the design of the driveway at all, just the minimum width so that emergency vehicles can, if they have to go down that private drive, turn around and get back out.
That makes sense.
So why are we going to limit the cross-access easements to eight lots or less?
Because anything more than that would allow a cross-access easement to be platted in a major subdivision, there's no difference between eight or thirty lots at this point.
Because, like, I'm thinking of Bear Lake, it's more than eight.
That's a P U D.
Well, it is, it is, but, but our cross-access easement regulations, we never, I don't know if we've ever made a decision that we wouldn't let them be included on the plat.
No, we didn't, that's why this is coming forward right now.
Right, so, I mean, why wouldn't we allow cross-access easements in a major plat? Why would we limit that? That's like government.
Are you questioning, asking me?
That's, I'm just throwing that question out there.
Well, from, from a staff perspective, emergency response is going to be the key thing. If we, if you have rain and you have an inch of gravel and that ambulance can't get up, twenty-ninth house on the three-thousand-foot-long cul-de-sac and somebody dies, nah, that's, that's, that's an issue, so I think.
Wouldn't that be decided on a case-by-case basis though? Because some cross-access easements might have a way out.
But we're not regulating the surface type, so like you said, they just put in a half inch of gravel.
Having, having read the, the document, the policy that you have, it seems to be that the cross-access, and it was before my time, but it seems that the cross-access easement was intended for family tracts to be split off in five or six or seven lots so that the kids, they didn't have to do a road improvement to a current county standard and give their tracts to their children, which I can totally understand that, and if that's the intent of the policy, then I think it probably needs to be limited to a minor subdivision which would meet the intent of, of that reg.
Well, I think it should be left to the individual developer to decide what kind of a development they are looking at.
But we need to, to begin the proper, having development that is within our.
I think this is fine. It could be a planned unit development at Bear Lake and, and, there's a few others that, you know, they've got some really nice paved streets built to, pretty much they're built to the county standard, but they just want it to remain private.
Well, this, this is a definite regulation of people's.
But it doesn't take into any account whatsoever, infrastructure, I mean, if you go more than eight, those eight lots, you're not, you're not in any way taking into account the fact that we're trying to encourage development as close to cities as we can, and that is stepping away from that entirely if we remove something like, if we say we don't.
Being larger.
Well, that's the current rule, I mean, we don't have a rule like this, we're just adding a regulation now to make it so it's less, less developable.
I guess from a staff standpoint, our, our question is, do you intend for C A Es to be for private farms that people want to, or do you intend to use that as a tool for development in the future for larger lot subdivisions?
That's what I thought, I thought we were allowing developers to have more leeway and they decide what kind of developments they're going to put together and that if a cross-access easement was, if a cross-access easement was part of that.
Now, I will say that when we first talked about this, we wanted to... Some of us wanted to limit it to hard surface on the cross-access easements. But I don't think we were trying to limit it to X number.
Well, my concern is on these cross-access easements, if we do go over the eight magic number, more likely in the future, interior road subdivisions are going to have to do off-site road improvements. This, they would not be doing off-site road improvements on a cross-access easement. And let's face it, if you're going to dump, say, 20 houses on an interior road, you really need to do off-site road improvement.
Right.
Because the folks that are living there every, say, 300 to 600 feet or whatever, you know, you're all of a sudden, you're quadrupling the traffic or 10 times the traffic.
That's what I'm saying, we're not taking that into account. We're not taking that into account.
Not into account the impact you're making on a short stretch on a road.
Right.
So...
I agree.
And with these just being cross-access easements, they're just basically glorified gravel driveways.
Driveways.
Private roads. Private driveway.
Private driveway. Private drive, and I'm assuming they're all marked clearly that they are private drives, private roads, whatever, that no county maintenance is being done on these. Don't call and ask for snow removal or load a rock.
And as we also know, that individual developers, whoever, can come back to us at any point in time and ask for changes or to amend.
To ask the county to take the road and through testing to determine whether it's built to county standards or what it's going to take to get it up to county standards to bring it into the road system. So...
Yep.
But I'd like to limit it until that time.
Right.
And it may be a development that that's how they're going to start, kind of like a home-based business. Start out as a cross-access easement and then grow.
Which is why the 60-foot-wide and 100-foot cul-de-sac...
Yes. I agree.
Upfront.
I agree.
Exactly.
Eventually, they will be county roads.
Yep.
Again, for clarification, that's a add that, keep that section in, that bullet point? I think so.
Keep it. Got it.
Next.
Codify the requirements for development plans. So I believe it was last November, John brought before you a list of items for a development plan that we would begin requiring for rezones to be submitted with that process. It's not a finite approval when it comes through, but it outlines what the applicant is proposing so that the Planning Commission and you yourselves can start to understand what the developer is proposing to do. So this is just codifying that and including the basic information that the applicant would need to provide in those plans.
In a number of places in our regulations, it notes development plans, but it gives no criteria for development plans. So that's our intent here, to kill two birds with one stone. Provide the base information for both planned districts and on rezoning requests, to fill in that void of the... That the policy currently has in it.
And this might be the wrong place to ask this, but it seems like it always comes up about water runoff whenever we're looking at a new subdivision or a new PUD or a new whatever. Is there a way to bump up, or is it necessary even, bump up the water runoff plans upfront somehow?
That's part of the considerations of a development plan in general terms. We're not asking you to do a complete study, but we are asking you to at least give a conceptual plan of how you'll handle that on-site drainage.
Okay. Perfect.
Last one was to just add definitions accordingly. So since we're bringing stuff in, we want to make sure we have appropriate definitions in our regulations.
Of course.
Works for me.
Yep.
Next.
That's it. I conclude.
That's what it is right there. Keep it right there.
Question on considering incentives to encourage applicants to incorporate conservation design principles in development processes.
So that would get axed also. Okay. Right.
From the comprehensive plan, you mean that strategy?
Yeah. What do you mean conservation?
That was a strategy identified by the consultants for the comprehensive plan.
We did not prioritize that in the review. There are many strategies, and there are the three strategies that were prioritized this year. If you remember, I gave you a presentation in February. That was the Utilities Commission. That was the tiering of SUPS and the expansion of HOLs. One that came in after that was the agricultural element, which you guys pulled out today. So those three items were defined as the high priority goals for the 2024 review and reviewed by Planning Commission, but that was not an identified goal.
But there's really no reason that... I mean, although it's not... It's, you know, what we were talking about with one thing. It's... There's nothing wrong with encouraging developers or development to include certain elements just to encourage it to happen, you know, and as part of your development plan to say, you know, we'd like to... For you to consider, not... It's not required, but take into consideration that, you know, it's not a bad idea to have green space.
Yeah.
I mean, there's, you know, or to, you know, within your new subdivision, to have a walking trail or a fountain that looks pretty or whatever. I mean, just, there's nothing that precludes saying it would be a good idea to do this because it's also going to help with your sales of your development. I mean, when people...
Right. Always does.
You read that, it said incentives? Something about incentives?
Incentives, yeah.
Well, there...
Consider the use of incentives.
There are a number...